Row call please.
Yes. Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Pang.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Yes, here. I think, yeah, I'm here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erico.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Opening statement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 1975, see 231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted on the Board of Education Administrative Office Board. Copies of this notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Okay. Dr. Alderelli, strategic plan update.
Yeah, thank you so much, Board President Shi. Yeah, we have actually a couple of presentations that are at our action meeting that's scheduled for Tuesday. The first one will be our strategic plan update, and the pillar that will be focused on is the portrait of the graduate. You know, that area really focuses on the skills, the mindset, and the capabilities of what we believe is a well-rounded student and a product of the Edison Township Public Schools. So we're really excited to hear from Mr. Cohen, as well as Mr. McGrath, who co-chair that committee. And the second part of that is going to be where the rubber meets the road, and the reason why we are all here in that student recognition. We celebrate the talents, the accomplishments of our students that are a result of the hard work of them, their parents, our teachers, as well as our administrators, and all members of the organization that make this place one of the best school districts around. So looking forward to both of those.
We too. President comments? So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first meeting of the year. It's an honor to have you here as we begin what I hope will be a productive and collaborative year for our students, schools, and our community. We encourage your active participation whether through public comments, volunteering, or joining school's PTO. Your involvement is vital to the success of the district. Thank you for being here tonight. Let's get the agenda started. Dr. Alderelli.
Great. So for the board, we have an agenda for our first Board of Education meeting in relationship to action items. As you can see from the administrative resolutions, we have the second reading of our policies. The first reading was conducted in December. All of these policies, with the exception of the AI policy, are a result of the audit that was conducted, I want to say it was January 2023, by Strauss Esme, to ensure that all of our policies are up to date. So we have done a robust look at all of these. We are almost at the finish line, and we are currently in the process of looking at dates for policy committee meetings in the very near future to address those. So the second resolution is honoring the individuals that donate their time on behalf of the community here in Edison Township, and that is our school board recognition. We will be doing a ceremony at that time, so we are looking forward to that. The official recognition is located on the agenda. And then we will have our student recognition resolution. There will be a presentation, and then the actual resolution for adoption there as well. And last but not least, in the administrative resolutions, we have the approval of our December HIB report. The next portion of that is our curriculum and instruction resolutions. The first resolution is regarding field trips that are transpiring over the course of the next few months. And the second resolution addresses the professional development for all staff members that are going on in the district to fine-tune their craft and bring back great things that are going on outside of Edison so that we can turnkey them and continue to improve our practice here. And last but not least is our special services resolutions, out-of-district placements, as well as a contract rate for in-home therapy, professional services. And that is the conclusion of my report for this evening. Mr. Shi.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. Mr. Toth.
Yes, the first item up that I have is your traditional monthly financial reports in minutes, including the board secretary's report. Contract awards, kind of a skinnier month in terms of contracts. We have some larger ones going out for technology, for JP, for wiring, and AP for the new addition, which is exciting. It's going to be coming online probably end of June. Procurement, we're renewing a competitive contract for our district-wide air filters. Facilities, we have a change order, but this is actually a really good one. We're receiving an $800,000 credit from our ESIP program. We've done really well with the projects that are aligned with ESIP in terms of bidding, so we were able to save some money. So we're actually going to receive an $8,000 credit back to the district. I'm sorry, $800,000. I'm a little under the weather today, got a bad cold.
That's a big difference.
But $800,000 is really a huge thing, so that's great for us as a district. We're going to be applying for a couple of grants, and then as of now, there's no transportation contracts as of yet. That's it.
So, Mr. Toth, can you tell us what we plan to do with that $800,000?
Sure. Since we have this large credit coming back to us, we're going to use that to fund the Edison High School switchgear project. As you know, I think I've talked about this before, definitely in committees. The switchgear is very much outdated there. I believe it's from the '60s. Part of it's not really functioning well, but we're going to be able to replace the entire switchgear package at Edison High School, which is, you know, really an exciting thing in terms of doing something good for the infrastructure of the building.
So if folks have concerns about, you know, air conditioning, the infrastructure over there, this is the first step. Switchgear for Edison High.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
That's switchgear.
Yes.
It's old, and we're replacing it, and yes, it will help us in the infrastructure of that school.
Absolutely.
So just to make sure that the public knows.
Yeah, that's why I asked him to.
We're working on that. We've been working on it for a long time. Thankfully, now it's coming to fruition.
Thank you. Mr. Romano. All right, so next is board member comments. Well, you started it. Do you have anything else you want to say? Continue.
Yes, I do. I am the superintendent's liaison to the library. The new board members at the library, they said that they are committed to not closing Clara Barton. I hope they understand that. Clara Barton Library is a valuable part of the library in our district. The library in North Edison will be closing for major construction in, I believe, the 28th of this month. And the new temporary will be on Oak Tree Road across the street from the Edison Family Restaurant. There's a building there, I believe there's, I think it's 6,000 square feet, that they're going to take and utilize. Now, that project should last about 15 months. So that's where the temporary library is going to be. Now, what they're doing at the library is part of the building is separating from part of the building. So they're going to replace this area. They're doing major renovations to make it more efficient. So in other words, we could put more projects, more programs in that facility. That's what, if anybody's listening to what's going on, that's what the money's for. Now, there was a construction, no, excuse me, there was an architectural firm that gave us bids, and we found out that they weren't what they said they were. So the fact of the matter is, is that the numbers had to go back out. Now, what makes it interesting is that the same architectural firm was used at another facility, not the library. The other facility was for turf fields and infrastructure upgrades. That was $5 million. There's change orders that have brought it up to six, I'm sorry, excuse me, added 6.4 million more. So when we talk about construction at the Board of Ed, we are behind this. We are watching every step that's going on. The fact of the matter is, is that we didn't drop the ball. Someone else did. But you have my word that the people at the library, especially the new trustees, come out the other night and said, "We will not close the Clara Barton Library." I'm not saying about anybody else. Because if everybody remembers, we fought hard to keep that library. And some of those people that are on the trustee board, they were in line with somebody else that wanted that building. My name is Joe Romano, and I responded to somebody that used the word anonymous. I will not. I will not use the word anonymous. Joe Romano says, "That's not going to close." So if you can listen to any of the other library trustees, you can reach out to them. We will not. I will not. I will not stand for them closing the Clara Barton Library. Libraries are what our children use, what we use as public. They are a vital part of education. Our students need the education that they get at the library. So if anybody wants, my name is not anonymous. My name is Joe Romano, and I stood up and said, "It will never happen." Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Any other board member comments? Anybody? See enough? I have some comments, and I'll go back to my old way of, before I ask, make my comments, I ask questions for Dr. Alderelli. So there were some concerns from parents about vape detectors in our schools. So the question is, do we have vape detectors in our schools?
The answer is yes. We do have vape detectors in our schools.
Okay. I know the answer. I just wanted you to say it.
You got it. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
So we have all the bathrooms in the high schools, the middle schools?
High schools currently right now. Middle schools, we're actually looking at data to determine, number one, what's the frequency? How many vapes are we taking off of students at that time? Is it a prevalent problem? And then once we kind of look at that, we'll use the same approach that we did in those high schools as well. We've seen great results at that time also. So if it's necessary for the middle schools, that's what we'll do as well.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. So I just have some comments. One is about the education foundation. A year ago, more than a year ago, when I was on the board, this is something that we want to get it set up. I'm very happy to announce that the education foundation has been set up. Mr. Toth, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
So you will be hearing more from us with the Ed Foundation. So it's coming. The other thing is, you know, we have nine board members. We have our differences, but let's remember we're here for the kids. Let's put our personal differences aside and work for the betterment of the students, the community, and our district. The third is, people probably remember from last year, because I remember, the JMI construction bid is supposed to be open on the 15th of this month, and it's not open. It's not on the agenda because we had to make amendment. Not JMI, I'm sorry.
Marshall.
Marshall, John Marshall, I'm sorry. John Marshall, we have to make some amendment to that, and it's, right now, the target is 22nd?
22nd.
22nd of January. So can't wait for that bid opening. And the other thing is JMI. It's supposed to be bid-ready last January, and it's still not ready. So I hope I can see the architect at our next finance facility meeting with the principal, so we can iron out all the differences and get it going. There are some discussions about the new bathroom policy in JP. I totally understand where this is coming from, and, you know, the school leadership should be commended for their effort. Let's give it a try and see how it works out. But the concern is number of times that the students allow for the digital hall pass and the time for each hall pass. So there were suggestions about still using the check-in, check-out method for the bathroom pass, but not limiting the time and not limiting the number of times in a day. So let's see if the current policy works well. If not, you know, maybe we can look into that. Those are some of the concerns from the parents. Next is, we're going to open up for public comments, but before the public comments, I just wanted to say that we're going to keep the policy of six minutes. And I'm not going to stop you when the clock hits six minutes. I'm going to point the clock, and please wrap it up. Okay? I give you the respect, and please give us the respect to try to wrap it up. I'm not going to interrupt you, say, "Hey, time is up." And also, I'm going to give you the rebuttal. Okay? I'll give you a three-minute rebuttal that we have been practiced in the past. So you have six minutes and a three-minute rebuttal. All right? With that said, no more board member comments. We're going to open for motion for, oh, we don't need motion. Okay, so we're open.
You should have a motion.
We should have a motion. Okay. Can we have a motion for public comments?
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Patel and Mr. Erico. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the podium is yours. Public comments. Who is going to be the first one for the 2025 to stand over there?
There you go, Mr. Patel.
There you go.
Good evening. Anthony Marra, 5 Coletto, Cordill, Edison. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm here again to speak about Policy 5756. The policy is wrong. The policy is evil. It does harm to our children. If the Division of Child Protection and Permanency were operating as they should, they would call it child abuse. But unfortunately, they too have succumbed to our society's bent toward the LGBT, LGBTQ agenda. It needs to be wiped out. Mr. Shi, you have told me to my face that you would vote to abolish this policy. I'm going to hold you to your word. Vote to abolish this policy. Join Ms. Pang, Mr. Vishal Patel, Anjana Patel, who voted at the, I think it was the September, October meeting, whichever one it was, to abolish this policy. It was the October.
October.
October one. To have a policy like this that allows children, these are children, we're the grownups. We're supposed to be educators. We're allowing them to make decisions about life-altering matters. There's an administrative regulation here. New Jersey Administrative Code 8:27-2.6 that says, quote, "No person shall perform any body piercing procedure upon a person under 18 years of age without the presence written consent and proper identification of a parent or legal guardian. No person shall perform genitalia piercing upon a person under 18 years of age regardless of parental consent." Yet, we can allow a student to say, "I'm going to change my gender from boy to girl, girl to boy, and mutilate my body and take hormone blockers," and not even tell mom and dad. Come on. Come on. How many parents here would like to have that done to them? Your son or daughter goes to school and says, "You know what? I think I want to change my gender from boy to girl, girl to boy." And the school says, "No, we're not going to tell you. We're going to keep you in the dark." If this doesn't trouble you, respectfully, you need to rethink why you're on the board. The Lord Jesus Christ gave us a rule. It's called the Golden Rule. Do unto others as you will have them do unto you. You can't argue with this policy. You can't argue with this rule, excuse me. You can't argue with that. Who doesn't want to practice that? Who doesn't want to work with people who say, "I want to treat you the way I want to be treated"? So do you want to be treated by being kept in the dark, by not being told about what's happening with your child in school? The policy specifically said, 5756 specifically says, "There's no affirmative duty for any school district staff member to notify student's parent of the student's gender identity or expression." This needs to be wiped out. There's another rule, law in the Bible. It's called the Fifth Commandment. Honor your mom and your dad. Are we honoring mom and dad by keeping them in the dark? No, we are not. If you're a parent, do you feel honored if your son or daughter decides to change from boy to girl, girl to boy, and the Edison School System says, "No, we're not going to tell you"? Some have said that if Policy 5756 is wiped out, it's a violation of New Jersey law against discrimination. It is not. It is not. And I challenged the board attorney to mount an argument that says it is. It is not. What kind of a policy, what kind of violation is it, where we have a policy that says, "We want the child to be the gender he or she was born to so that he or she can reproduce in the usual way"? Because a student changes his gender, he's going to have a hard time reproducing in the usual way. Where the risk of suicide increases, we all want suicide to be wiped out or as diminished as possible. So the policy that replaces 5756 should be a policy that says, "We want our children to grow up as they were born. We want them to be able to have children." That student who says, "I'm going to change my gender," 10 years down the line, you think he might regret that decision? What are we going to say to him? "Well, we give you your choice. We let you exercise your free will. Why didn't you protect me? Why didn't you protect me? I was a kid in school, and I had these procedures done, and you, as the grownups in the Board of Ed, did nothing to stop it?" Come on. I implore you to abolish 5756. One last matter. Mr. Lugo, you voted to abolish it and change your mind at a subsequent meeting. You have convictions against it. It's obviously, you recognize it is wrong. Keep your conviction. Abolish this policy 5756. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next? Mrs. Conway.
Good evening. Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I always start my year off each time to remind each and every board member that you've been elected to be board members, and your main job is to make sure that the district is run well and not run by you, that you have your specific jobs to do, and the one main job has been taken care of until 2029. So everything else goes by the administration, and you're there to see that the administration is doing their job well. I know sometimes, in the past, board members have gotten involved because people run to them with concerns, and it's just human nature that you want to get involved and help. But the best way to help is to let the administration know and have them do their job. That's what they get the big bucks for. So I need to remind everybody to yearly remember that, and don't overstep because you don't get paid. Your salary is the least it can ever be. Number two is, at this time of year, the committee assignments have been given out. I haven't seen them yet on the website. Are they actually put out on the website? They are there? Okay, so I'll have to look for them. And with a new year, are we going to be given our monthly updates as to all the construction that's going on? Luckily, I have been invited as a formal nosy Board of Education member to see the final workings of, we saw Woodrow Wilson, and we saw John Adams gymnasiums, and we saw the Edison Success Academy. So it's fabulous, and I'm proud of that. But I know there's a lot more going on, so I'm asking that updates be given on each of the construction sites in the district. I do drive by JP Stevens, and it seems like it's on its way, and it's something well-needed, even though we still have the driveway. So as big as the classrooms can be and room for the students, getting in there has still not been taken care of. The next thing is, I had asked about this quite a while ago, about the use of cell phones in the schools. And I had asked if any discussion had taken place yet, and at that time, I was told no. But listening to Governor Murphy the other day, he's trying to push that something be done regarding cell phones in the schools. And they did interview a couple of schools and what they're doing to help that move forward. So I'm wondering if the conversation has come up yet regarding that. And the last thing is, Policy 5756, I still stand by not knowing the particulars that Mr. Marra speaks about regarding the policy. And as a member of the Human Relations Committee in town, I have invited Dr. Alderelli to come and speak about the particulars of the policy itself. So this way, more people would be educated as to the actual facts of the policy. So once we get a date in 2025, I'll let you know. And that's about it. Happy New Year, and hopefully this will be a good and positive New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. So to answer the question about the committees, it's online. It's been online since Friday. As far as cell phone, I have Dr. Alderelli answered that question.
Yes, we do have a policy in relationship to cell phone use, right? Obviously not utilized during instructional times unless it's utilized as an instructional tool, right? But teachers usually don't grant permission in relationship to that. Our policy does dictate after-school activities, non-instructional components that they're able to use. The governor's piece came out, which always sparked conversation in relationship to that, right? You know, unfortunately, cell phone use does sometimes lead to students interacting in, you know, a non-pro-social manner, right? And, you know, without supervision during those timeframes, you know, it could lead to other incidences, right, of discipline and things along those lines. It's actually a topic of discussion that I'm going to be bringing up. I have a Student Advisory Council entitled Sages. I'm actually going to talk about it with students. What are their thoughts in relationship to it? Is it a distraction during the day? How do you utilize them responsibly? We're also going to have that conversation with teachers too, right, to see if it is. To see if it is something that's prevalent in those classrooms. Is it a distraction, how it's utilized, as well as administrators? So I do think our buildings have a good handle on its use currently right now. We really don't see too many issues in relationship to inappropriate cellphone use. Usually after-school act, after-school, those are, that's when things get a little, you know, it's areas that we need to address. But our policy kind of lays out the utilization of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Anthony DiAmmer, twenty-five Wiley. I guess my question is, does the district do anything for the inauguration? In terms of the students witnessing that, just as a, you know, as a historical perspective? You know, to me, it's a teachable moment there. You know, we have a new president being sworn in. Forget about the politics of it, just, that goes for any president going forward. So I was just wondering if the, they witnessed that at the younger levels or any level? Just curious.
Yes, I mean, so the inauguration is set for Monday, so obviously wouldn't be a live televised event. But it's definitely covered in civic classes and social studies, right? As a part of the democratic process, a part of a peaceful transition. I would imagine that, yeah, I would. Yeah, that's okay, that's okay, but listen, I mean, we can even talk about past past inaugurations as well too. Any opportunity to highlight things, not only that are in our constitution, but, you know, the peaceful transition of power is something that America prides themselves on. Teachers use that as a teachable moment in all aspects of the grade level and when it's appropriate to fit into the curriculum, so it's definitely done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Brian.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Rivera, ninety-eight Stony Road. Bear with me, I had a lot of thoughts, so I actually wrote them down. So let me begin. First of all, I want to say good evening. I want to hope everyone is doing well. I am here to state some concerns regarding some of the recent committee assignments. Something that I brought up last, last time we were here. I'm going to focus specifically on Finance and Facilities Committee today. The individuals appointed to this committee were Jerry, Vishal, Ronak, and Ralph. Notably, the three, these three members actually ran a campaign together and then Vishal was actually a big supporter of that campaign, except for Ralph. Ralph, I could send you that little Facebook post if you want to see that again. But I guess you're not in the inner circle, but I did want to restate that. But my primary concern is the lack of continuity on some of these committees. As no members from the previous year's Finance and Facilities Committee were even reappointed or even put back on. And the absence of institutional memory troubles me because it risks losing critical knowledge and insights from prior discussions. Allow me to provide an example. One of the examples was the JP Stevens expansion. During the project, committee members changed midway through the planning process. As a result, the project was rushed, leading to significant oversights, such as the plumbing issue. We forgot to add plumbing into the new addition, so now we can't put wet labs there. Now, I find that an issue because if people were still in that committee, they could have had those conversations. They could have reminded individuals saying, "Hey, listen, we had this discussion. We forgot, we didn't implement this for this particular reason, so we needed to have that discussion now." But now we have an addition that we don't have no wet labs in. So I have a concern with that. So the error means that none of these new rooms can function as wet labs. A costly oversight that could have been avoided, had been a consistent representation on the committee. This was also an issue that was raised by a newborn, Chris, at the time, where he had a conversation with superintendent about this, where Chris actually wanted to take it back to the drawing board and fix it, but it was just too costly to do so. We were already in the process, wheels were in motion, so we stuck with the plan. I believe Eddie was making a suggestion where we could have classrooms there and continue labs somewhere else, if I remember that conversation correctly. Also, I would like to remind the board and its members, and the members of the public, particularly new board members, because you're new to the game, that we have the fiduciary duty to act as the best interest for the community. Not personal interests and not for any particular board member or their faction. And with that said, you know, I tried to remain quiet the last two days and be polite and let the festivities happen, but now I'm going to berate some of the concerns that I have. And I can say it now because it's public knowledge. I said, "I also have to address a serious matter involving Mr. Vishal Patel." Which though initially it was private, but it became public when Mr. Patel decides to file a complaint against the Board of Education. Mr. Patel sued the board after rightfully refused to cover his personal legal fees. Fees that occurred due to his own actions and inactions as a board member. Despite multiple requests, the board consistently rejected Mr. Patel's demands to use public funds for what we believe were inappropriate expenses. To provide further context, Mr. Patel hired a personal attorney to represent him, knowing full well that the board had no obligation to cover these expenses. When the board stood firm in its refusal, Mr. Patel escalated the matter by filing a lawsuit against the Board of Education. Following the board election with allies now on the board, Mr. Patel voluntarily dismissed this complaint. Suddenly he went away. However, dismissal was made without prejudice, which means that he has the right to refile this lawsuit at any time that he wants to. For the board and the public's awareness, board members who sue the board cannot remain on the board, which raises concerns about Mr. Patel's motivations. Instead of bearing his legal costs, he dismissed the lawsuit to maintain his position, potentially with the hope that the newly configured board would act in his favor and pay him that fifteen thousand dollars. It is deeply concerning that the board not only elected him as the vice president, well, I'm still laughing to this day, but also appointed him as the Finance Chair Committee, a position that demands the highest level of integrity and impartiality. Given Mr. Patel's history of disregarding board policies and legal advice, the appointment represents a clear conflict of interest and jeopardizes the district's fiscal responsibility. I strongly ask the board to reconsider this committee appointments and uphold the previous board's position of refusing to allocate public funds for personal legal expenses. It is imperative that the taxpayers' money is used responsibly, transparently, ensuring decisions are made for the best interests of our community. I thank you for your time and your attention in regards to that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't you want to say a couple of words about that?
Just the matter at hand has been dismissed, there is no complaint currently. There's no open litigation. The issue of whether or not a board member who files suit against the board, and I'm not going to go into a bunch of legal advice, but there are exceptions to a board member, if they file suit against the board, they are allowed to remain on the board, there are exceptions to that rule. There was no challenge at all on this matter. There is no case in controversy presently and there's nothing before this board.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, I said you have three minutes.
So basically I just want to see where this board is going. Are we going?
We don't have any other first timers, excuse me.
Sorry.
Any first timers before, okay, no, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeh, I appreciate it. So I just wanted to make sure, because previously we've had this discussion twice. We shouldn't be using taxpayers' money to pay personal expenses. And I want to make sure that this board is aware that the previous board did not like this. And I'm hoping now that the board has changed, the decision still remains the same. I'm really concerned that suddenly the board changes and suddenly there's a resolution or there's a check sent out there and somebody missed it. I want it to be aware with the superintendent, I want to let the business administrator, Mr. Sheeh as president, that if this comes up, the public should know that this is coming up. It shouldn't be hidden or some slick thing going on, because there's, I've seen a lot of slick things in the past. And now they have a couple of minutes though. Now I'm going to change the subject to a little lighter thing. First of all.
It's only rebuttal. It's rebuttal.
It's only rebuttal to what you.
No new topics, you know this, come on.
Well, I was just going to say if. Fifty-six, fifty-seven, that's the only, can I add that to the rebuttal?
No, that's a separate issue, you can come next time.
I just think the attorney should give.
It's a rebuttal, you know that, you're administrator, you know what rebuttal is, okay? I don't need to educate you on that, so.
Mr. Patel, can I address?
You don't need to address, if you don't want to. So any other comments from the public?
Okay. Can I have a motion to close public comments?
Close public comments?
Mr. Arico, last second. Mr. Vishal Patel? You missed it.
I was busy. I was trying to get my water bottle, my hand.
Pay attention, pay attention.
Okay.
All right, don't play on the cell phones, all right? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we are going to adjourn to the privileged session. So in accordance with the NGSA Section ten dot four dash twelve, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following. Confidential personnel and board matters, pending litigation, student matters, legal matters, and HIP appeal. Can I have a motion to adjourn to privileged session?
Jerry, me.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, I have to give it to you. And Mrs. White. All right? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we don't plan to come out after this, so I'll see you guys next Tuesday. Thank you.